Commissioner Duckett, how are you doing tonight?
Hi, I'm well. Let's just try to grasp something. How's everybody?
I think we're all good. Try. Hopefully everyone got to enjoy some of the weather today.
Right. It's so beautiful.
So waiting on one more commissioner, we should be good to go. Here we go.
Hello.
Hey Commissioner, how are you doing tonight?
Hello. We have a full quorum. That's our 701.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the work for the board town commissioners, town of Upper Marlboro. It's April 27th, 2021 and 702. May I have a roll call, please?
President Linda Pinoir.
Present.
Commissioner Sarah Franklin.
Here.
Commissioner Janice Duckett.
Here.
Dave Williams, Town Clerk, all present.
Please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag
United States of America.
And to the republic
Like for which it stands.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. Okay, getting right down to the business at hand. First order of business is ordinance 2021-01 Business Licensing. It is a board discussion. David, if you would.
Yes, Madam Mayor. I'll preface that this is not an official introduction. It's a pre-introduction reading of the introduction. Board of Commissioners for the Town of Upper Marlboro, ordinance 2021-01. Session Regular Town Meeting, introduced April 13th, 2021. An ordinance amending ordinance 2018-07 by continuing to provide for the licensing of associations, banks, and financial institutions, business establishments, corporations, professions, and other business entities doing business in the town of Upper Marlboro, and to repeal the annual municipal liquor license fee, and to change the term of licensure from annual to biannual renewals, and to make certain stylistic and other necessary changes to set ordinance, and generally relating to business regulation and licensure.
Okay, I open the floor for comment and discussion.
Did we receive any written comments? I'm guessing no.
We have not, no. And Dave, you can rebut me if I'm wrong, but we haven't gotten anything from the businesses or any written to info. He's gonna double check. No. Yeah, we did send a mailchimp out to the, I think almost 100 address, email addresses we had on file, and people opened it and read it because I could see when people do that through MailChimp, so. But I think the general feedback we've gotten is that says less on them than previous, so they're pretty happy. Be my kind of assessment. I think the mayor's talked to a couple of businesses about it. I don't know if they gave you any in-person comments, Mayor.
Well, most of the in-person comments are, thank you for lowering it. From three.
Any outliers of that that we should consider? Or is that pretty much it?
Yeah, I don't think I've heard any opposition at all. Or any negative comment.
If there was a negative comment, I would note it in my complaints log and forward to Will.
Okay.
And I haven't gone through that process. Nobody else.
Other comments or questions or anything on this matter?
So town staff will just put it through a final draft. And we'll pivot up on the agenda for approval at the Maytown meeting. It goes into effect after 20 days, and so after those 20 days, by probably mid-June or early June, Will and myself will coordinate on sending out the letters.
Okay. Okay, that will we'll move on to number two, ordinance 2021-02 FYI 2021 Budget Amendment. It is a board discussion. Okay, Will, do you want to discuss this?
Yes, good evening, everyone. I apologize. You can't see me right now. I'm about to go ahead to another location so I can try to get can activate currently right now. It's not, but right now we're discussing the budget, or sorry fiscal year 2021, which is the current year that we are in, a year end adjustment. Go basis for the most part. What we try to do is, you know, each year we budget for a certain allotment, or a certain amount of revenues in or expenses to go out, and sometime do this fiscal year, again, like many others, is try to bring those revenues in or expenses in alignment with what their, the actual figures are for the fiscal. Then oh. Was just some, some, some facts about the revenues this year. Whereas the town has collected roughly about 88% of its proposed revenues. We've seen great increases in the tax area specifically, earned income taxes. And of course, we're going to have to do some adjustments to our parking monies, parking and bringing as much as anticipated. And the parking violations, which has become over 100% based off of what was approved. And then on the expense side, right now, we are, we spoke about proposed expenses. Perfectly see within the Treasury report is that our revenues are exceeding our expenses this year. So we're, right now, we're we're leaning towards ending the year in the black, which is a great thing. And again, I'll just speak to some of those other areas of expenses that we'll have to amend or adjust a little bit. So that's what this amendment is for for the fiscal year 2021, a year in adjustments.
And Will, I just wanted to ask a question. I know we're ending in the black, but we also did not plan for a lot of, we put a lot of projects and initiatives on hold this year for the pandemic, right?
Yes, we did. We put some projects on hold, and we also did not hire some anticipated individuals or positions thus far this year.
Okay, thank you.
So our caution helped us manage, basically, is what you're saying, Kyle.
Yeah, I wasn't trying to go for that. I just wanted to clarify that this budget, we were kind of frugal, I guess. So that's why we didn't do as many expenses out there. But just because we ended in the black doesn't necessarily mean we're operating at full capacity with the full expenses we anticipate for next year's budget as well, so.
Or we could pave roads or anything.
We were very cautious with this budget when we put it together. Yeah, we had, you know, some issues to deal with that got even bigger than, you know, we thought it would. Any questions or comments?
Did you go over the expenses, Will, or did you just do revenues so far?
Yes, I did go over some of the expenses. For over each bullet point, I just spoke about the 71% of where our percentage is based off the expenses that we approved for this year. But since I'm talking about it, of course, we didn't have any community events this year, so we'll readjust that line item. Some things that we did not expect for, though some of it has been COVID-related expenses, but we wanted to make sure within the healthy safety of the employees and the town hall or whatnot, that we are continuously doing ongoing cleanings of our public property. So that's inside the facilities, the inside the vehicles as well, just keeping those locations clean and sanitized as well. And then one thing that I think I've been mentioning over the last meeting or two is about vehicle maintenance that has had, well, that area is really zeroed out for the most part. We are getting our vehicles serviced. However, there is some lag in invoicing, so that's pretty much on the expense side of how the majority of the adjustments will be made.
Thanks, Will. And then just so the commissioners are aware, the next step is that this is going to be turned into a true ordinance form. So Will's just going to get the exact numbers. We do ordinance amendment or budget amendment ordinance, and that'll get introduced at the Maytown meeting passage in June. And it'll go into effect 20 days after, give Will time to reconcile everything for the audit.
Do we have a reason for the 45% increase in utilities at Public Works?
Sorry, may I say, what was the cost of the 45%?
Right. Do we have, is there a, something we need to be looking out for this year as we do the budget? 5% is a high increase from what we've approved.
Yes, but I think if I can recall, and I apologize, I'm not looking directly at that line. It can recall, there was some unrelated expenses that we had to pay for for this fiscal year on a utility side. Now, we did, you know, as we budget for the entire approved budget for the next fiscal year, we always look at the past year's expenses and or revenues to try to get the best proposed, proposal, what the number should be. So I will say, and speaking to it right now, I don't know exactly what it was that kind of, that would have put it over, up to 45% from what what was approved. I could most certainly be able to find that out to you and get back to you. But I will say, when I looked at it, I seen that same exact number. And typically, our utilities are really our Pepco bills for streetlights and those types of things. So it might simply just be more so on the Pepco side, but I'll make sure I'll find that out.
And that's
So we know that if it's a one-time thing that happened, you know, that's one thing, but if it's something that we need to take a look at for the next budget. So if you would look into that, I would appreciate it.
I don't, I just pulled up the budget for fiscal year 2022 to check. Under the streetlight electricity, the amount that's we're budgeting for 2022 is a lot more than what was spent. So I'm wondering, you might have already kind of put some of that in there.
Okay.
I remembered it because I had a little question mark next to it. To ask you about.
I'm gonna go, I'm gonna look at this right now, so I should be able to give you an answer once I get back to my computer.
Okay, any other questions in the meantime? Any other comments?
Um, okay, I didn't know if I was you already. So here, we're just talking about the ordinance. Oh, ordinance 2021. Okay, I'm sorry.
It's the FY 22 budget. Yeah, you're
Right.
Yeah, thank you.
So we're just talking about this ordinance is for the, of course, to be approved ordinance for the next fiscal year. This is something that myself, Kyle, the department heads, and the Board of Commissioners have been speaking about over the last two or three months. We've been having special, special meetings to discuss the capital improvement, expenses, and the revenues. So so this pretty much gives an outline of some of the things that's very important or highlighted within the FY 2022 budget. On the revenue side, as spoke about in previous meetings, we created a step program for the tax increases. For all tax, for all taxing classifications. Something that was just mentioned was the business license fee rate that we were going to set, and and the other thing is, oh, earned income taxes as well. I've been in contact with the earned income taxes, earned income tax department in regards of what they're going to estimate for the next fiscal year. They have not sent that documentation over to me just yet. However, a lot of people have been wondering why we are receiving, I would say, more money than we anticipated in a budget before for earned income taxes. Pretty much their response as far as how they, their formula, and how they deposit money to local municipalities. They, they basically, no, not basically, they, the way that they deposit is based off of what they estimate. So they estimated this year that we would get roughly, I think it was roughly about 250,000. So that's how they, they pretty much front us the money, and then they reconcile at the end of the year, whereas that's how, in some months, we do not see deposits like in the month of December or April. So with that, again, we've increased what we anticipated to, to bring in this fiscal year, but within the latter stages of the next one or two months, we may not see any deposits from earned income taxes. On the expense side, things that were highlighted were cost of living adjustments into salaries, consolidations of certain line items such as our consultants, such as certain operational needs within the town, and also putting all of the benefits in one area for all departments as well. We, of course, have our continued ongoing debt service payment for our financing of the inventory within the public safety. And there has been some slight increases in a street maintenance department, sorry, in the streets, Public Works Department, Street Maintenance, sorry. Um, some important things are the reserve fund. So over the years, of course, the town has used a good amount of monies within our reserve fund for capital improvement upgrades. One of the things that the Board of Commissioners have been really adamant on making sure that we do is try to replenish that fund. So this year, we're going to try to make a good effort into trying to put some of that money within our budget back into the reserve fund. So we have allocated roughly about 19,000 to put into there, and hopefully maybe more, but we're going to, that's the goal right now, to put 19,000 back within FY 2022, and hopefully be able to build on that in FY 2023 and roughly get up to $50,000 to $75,000 a year to put back in there. And of course, not to just have it there to collect interest, but more so have it there for specific projects or for emergencies within the town of Upper Marlboro. Capital improvement projects, Kyle might want to speak on some of these items. I won't go into in-depth of them. But we want to make sure that we're keeping up with the capital improvement needs of the town and of the department. So there's a few items there that we think are a priority within the most recent fiscal year that we're coming upon. And that's all I have to speak unless, Kyle, you want to speak about some of the capital improvement items?
Yeah, I can just jump in real quick. So as you can see, there's a good amount of vehicles being purchased. We did not purchase any vehicles this past, or budget for any vehicles this past fiscal year. We did purchase the new code car using the grant. But that was only a cost of $12,000 to the town. So because of that, we were kind of almost playing catch-up this fiscal year with the purchase of some more vehicles, definitely for Public Works. Their last new vehicle they got was in 2017. So they're pretty much overdue for some new equipment, and that is their Chevy 6500 truck and the dump trailer. The big goal of that purchase is one, have a larger truck to hold more salt, and then also be able to haul more items to the dump at once, making that department a lot more efficient, and making trips once in time versus taking three trucks at a time multiple times. So that's the big push in that. The Ford explores for the police department. This budget adds some more police officers to the town. Let me, that's one of the meeting. So that's an additional to Ford explores, similar to the ones that we have now. So that way, each of the patrol officers has a new vehicle and will allow the Ford tourists to stay a reserve vehicle because it's getting up there in age. DPW facility stormwater management, that's just a small, I think, $5,000 in there for just some basic improvements we can do to prevent the flooding that happened at Public Works this past year. So that's the curb going in and possibly some other things, and we can stretch that and play with that as we get more into it, and there now is a chance to look into that. Com Memorial entrance beautification is kind of more of a townwide beautification effort, just purchasing some benches, some landscaping and whatnot, a kind of the main entrance ways into the town. So it's kind of more of a flexible item that the staff will bring different items to the board for consideration at a time, but it'll come out of that budget line item. The recycling camp program, that's about 20,000 for the purchase of 500 recycling carts, 300, some odd ones will go out immediately with about 200 in reserve. Those should last us the next five to six years at least, if not longer. Cable access meeting recording, that's only about 4,500. That's just to help broadcast the town's meetings and help with our cable access moving forward. The Marlboro Fire Department Grant, that is one based out of the that's $15,000 to help them purchase a new fire vehicle. They haven't purchased a new fire vehicle since 2007, 2008, so they're all passed. That is funded by the Recovery Act funds, so that purchase or that grant will not be made until those recovery funds come in. And that, that's the same for a couple of these capital improvements. We're not going to spend the money until that federal money comes in. And then the police technology infrastructure upgrade, that pretty much right now, the police department is on the general government's town server. We have one server for the entire town government staff. It's starting to reach capacity with its storage, especially with recorded meetings, documents, and whatnot. So the thought is, or our plan for the past year or so has actually been partitioned, the police off have two separate servers, so that way if they ever move in the future, they can just take their server and go. It's not a big headache on our part. It also frees up space on the town general government server for more documents as well, because everything's pretty much electronic these days. We're not getting nearly as much paper as we had. Even the pandemic, I think, accelerated that even more. So that's about $10,000 or $11,000 upgrade. For that, so that'll go a long way. So that's kind of an overview of the capital improvement projects. I'll let the department heads, if I missed anything. But I know we've talked about this a couple, a few, quite a few times, so.
Kyle, I just wanted to ask why, because I know that we got the streetscape improvement money. I'm just wondering why it's not in the capital improvement.
It's not, I can't, Will, correct me where I'm wrong. That is a 20,000. Right now, we're only pulling staff, so, oop, he's hopping on now. We're only recommended 20,000 being pulled out of that grant for now for the study, and then the remainder of that, once the study's done and we're ready to put the rest of that money into the budget, or we have a better idea on the cost, we do a budget amendment to transfer the remaining of that funds over there.
And that would be in capital improvement.
Correct. It'll be a new capital improvement project with a budget adjustment. We just had no number or no way of kind of predicting that, and we didn't really want to inflate the budget. So with state funds that we've done before. So that is still a capital improvement project. I guess it's just not a physical capital improvement project. So that may be what's listed there. And Will, I don't know if you heard, we were talking about the $20,000 for the streetscape study.
Right, we just didn't have the, like Kyle has said, really didn't just have the, the final number. We have talked about just putting it in there and maybe just having that line item there, having maybe zeroing it out, just until we find out what that number is and we can do an adjustment. But that's a good question, and we have discussed that. We just didn't really put it here because again, we didn't know what the final number would be.
And also, we're, I know I'm meeting with Greenwell next, in another week or two. They've been working on finding exactly how that money's coming to us or what the requirements are, because it is a new way. Bond bills are pretty easy or grants. This is kind of a new grant. It's kind of built into the state budget, so they're trying to figure out how it's coming to us. So hopefully, by here next month, we should have a lot better idea of how that money's coming. And if the state's dropping into one lump sum and us spending it, obviously that'll be brought into the budget. So that's, that may or may not change here in the next month or so, before the budgets pretty much finalized at the, the May work session would kind of be the last date for edits to the budget. So we can pass it in June, and it has its 20-day window needed for its July 1st passage. Or activation, because some months or some years, we have to actually bump the town meeting up because it, we run an issue with that 20-day ordinance.
Yeah. Um, this is not related to the actual budget, but the ordinance timeline is missing the May 18th meeting?
Oh, yeah, the extra, that's a good point, because that's, I just copy and paste it from the other ones being introduced next month as well. But yeah, you're right, there is an extra board work session on May 18th, which will primarily discuss salaries. Unless some other items come up as well. Thank you for that catch.
It'll wind up getting closed anyway, public.
Yes, yes, section of that meeting will, will definitely get closed to the public, but.
Any other comments or questions? Moving on. Next item is Resolution 2021-11 FY 2022-24 Town Tax Rates Plan. This is a board discussion. Questions or comments?
I have the same slides on here from the past, so there's no new information on these two slides, just the ones we've been talking about for a while. But pretty much if there's no comments or issues with the resolution as it's written, we have it on for passage at the Maytown meeting. But that's just, this isn't the official tax rate being set. This is the plan being put in place. The actual tax rate is listed in the budget ordinance. So it will technically be discussed again when you guys see it in the May, it will be introduced in May as the final tax rate, but that's kind of just puts the plan in place. So I just wanted to highlight that for the commissioners, although it's being passed. It also helps us give the information, pass the information to the state quicker as well, because it's approved in this form.
Any comments?
Right along, all right. Mayor, do you want me to hop on this one? Ordinance 2020-03. So this will become ordinance 2020-04. This is just the pre-discussion before a draft is made. It will become budget amendment, and yeah, it'll be a budget amendment to the original ordinance. But pretty much, we've kind of discussed the personal standards a bit. This was brought up because we have to make some changes to it based off some of the staff positions we're adding. Some changing of some position titles, bring in lines and pay grades. I know the commissioners had some items as well. They wanted to change because this was obviously passed by the previous board. So the current board wants to look at it, and I mean, it's all pretty much listed there, and I can open a shared document.
I can kind of summarize the changes I was suggesting. So I, we had the whole issue with the vacation and accruals going back and forth. So I stuck in something in there to So I stuck in something in there to maintain everyone's vacation accruals where they are. Even when we change the rates for people coming in. And then I also added language so that any commissioner wishing to be involved in a hiring process for any employee would be involved in that process. I added some language to say that in kind of in addition to not discriminating that we should try to go out and use the best practices in hiring to ensure non discriminatory hiring. And then I added an area adding termination of staff would require full board approval, which wasn't in there before. I did have and then I changed, you can slash all the pay grades, because I thought we needed to talk about that. But I was wondering on the cola. And this is something maybe Will can answer. For the cost of living increases, it seems well, I had trouble finding what that number is. So I was wondering if it's complicated to find or if there's an easier thing to tie it to while we're looking at adjustments.
So are you, so are you saying it was complicated to find?
I couldn't find it.
Will be like for the next, the next fiscal year for the next year?
Yeah, because it says the town cola for each fiscal year will be equal to the total pay increase received at the beginning of the same calendar year by the United States Government General Schedule.
Yeah, it's a website that you can find it at. It is a website, pretty much the information that's listed here, but if you go to the GS site, I can, it is really, I'm not sure with that.
You can find it easily then.
Yeah, yes, yes. So, and I don't know if
Find it easily as long as you can.
Yeah, we can find it and they don't, they only set it for they set it for the calendar year, they don't set it about a fiscal year. So it was set for twenty twenty one already for January to December twenty twenty one. And we did look at that, well, the ordinance, of course, and make sure that it reflected what we were trying to have as far as the cost of living increases.
Yeah, and then I asked you about that one two thousand instead of one twenty eightieth. Um, and I got your email and I guess it's kind of like we're pay, the part time employee is almost getting paid vacation without taking paid vacation. Yes.
I don't know if I would think of it that way.
I shouldn't put it that way.
Yep, I, I think they're just assuming how I'm seeing is that they're, they're ass- assuming that an employee has comes in and gets basically two weeks of vacation. So they're, they're, the formula that they did it was based off to get the individual who is working. I guess roughly less than forty hours a week. They did the, the gross will equal the, the hours per week that are working times the fifty weeks. Times their hourly rate, I think it was, but that's how they, instead of doing fifty two weeks, they did fifty and that's how they come up with two thousand instead of twenty eighty. Because they're anticipating that an employee is most likely going to take off two weeks of vacation in a year.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't, I just, I don't know.
I think we could simplify this if we just say that they'll be paid at half the if they're this is trying to say they're going to be I don't know, I think we should, I think we should just reword this blurb as far as when it comes to part time employees and how to repeat.
Okay.
And our, and for me, I don't believe that I mean, all part time employees should be paid by the hour. There, you can be a salary part time employee, I believe, correct?
Can you?
I'm pretty sure you can. You just, you, you can be a, or administrative employee that's, that's works part time. So I don't think it should be paid by the hour. So maybe this is the area that we should look at the, the change to maybe more so fit what we are accustomed to or what we know how to explain.
Yeah, maybe, I mean, I don't know if we can ask insurance, we keep giving them eventually and things. But I don't know if they could take a look and see if they think there's a better way or, I mean it sounds like you maybe have some ideas too, so.
We'll send it over, we'll send this, this area over to insurance to see what they say about it. Yes, well, we can do that.
Because we talked to him today about the part times, Will and I did. Do a part time employees get benefits, which we can discuss in the, in the next, the handbook line item. But they said if an employee works thirty hours a week, they're pretty much, they should be getting all the benefits.
Yeah.
Full time.
So how I would think of it as if we're, if we, if we're categories categorizing someone as a part time employee and we don't want that part time employee to have, I guess, benefits and when I'm speaking of benefits, more so speaking of like medical benefits. Then we should not have them work thirty hours. We should, they should only be able to work or cap at twenty nine and a half hours or twenty nine hours or depending on how we need it to work so that we're not offering of benefits to that part time employee.
Right, and then they would also have to be non exempt. Maybe, I don't know, this is
I think it depends on, for me, I think it depends on which, and you correct me if I'm wrong, but I think more so whether you're exempt or non exempt. I think that should depend on what department it should be in.
Okay.
Because like public works, those are I always think they're non exempt, they're non exempt and they're, they're work hourly because they're allowed to get overtime. If they have a weekend or emergency and more so the administrative people are exempt, of course, and so I think I can gauge it on whether a part time position should be exempt or non exempt. I think it more so, this is my opinion, I think it should depend on the department or the type of work that they're doing.
So maybe we can look into that part a little more before we go.
And then one other section I kind of pulled out, especially after we've been having, going through the employee handbook was the where is that? The probationary period, here it says six months, it has to be three months. Is how the handbook's written.
Yeah, ninety days.
So we just changed that section as well. But police stay for one year probation, which is what the handbook states as well. So that's just another item I've kind of realized, working, getting ready for this work session. But yeah, so I guess the next step is Will and myself will send this over to insurance, have some discussions, have some options for the board. In the meantime, we'll send the entire document over to the town attorney so he can start putting it into a ordinance amendment format for us to present at the May work session so that we can get it passed at the June town meeting and, and ready to go by the July first deadline. Did you have this in the word version, Commissioner?
Oh yeah, I think it's a Google Doc, but yeah.
Okay.
I did it with the caps lock key instead of changing the thought, though. Sorry.
Figure it out.
Any other questions? This will be going to the town attorney, so we know it does not conflict with the charter. Correct?
Right, yeah, that's what I mentioned, it's going to go to the town attorney tomorrow, so we can start digging into it. And have it in time by the, the town meeting and we can have some updates and discuss the, we'll probably may have to discuss this a little bit at the May work session. And or the extra, we'll definitely discuss the May work session, but also the, the May extra work session possibly as well. Depending on what kind of edits come back or whatever we find with insurance as well. I just want to make sure we have enough time with the board to, to discuss kind of those items as well.
And the code enforcement officer pay grade. It says two dash four is not consistent with its current pay grade of that person.
Correct, yeah, so we're editing that code officer, let me get to that section, Mayor, we can focus in on that area.
And Kyle, within that, I guess our, the town administrators and the finance should probably be adjusted as well as far as
Correct, yeah, so Will and I figured there's some, when this was set, I guess we didn't do a great, a great job of looking at, comparing with the existing salaries people add and getting them to fit. So there's some pay grade adjustments, which we'll see, I know this one also, we also need charge, change the director of finance, human resources to include pay grade seven, correct, Will? To make sure that that's in compliance with what we're at now. And then the, the police department, I think, is set for now, the police clerk or the code enforcement officer's pay grade will be changing to reflect their current salary. And then the big, kind of the biggest changes are coming in the public works department, which is exciting, we're, this would create the director of public works versus a superintendent, which is a kind of a confusing title. When especially Darnell interacts with his peers, there's not a whole lot of superintendent, that's more for golf courses. Is where you see those, so director of public works puts in, people understand his job title a lot more and then we are also looking to add a foreman into that area as well, because that's the only department that does not have really a second in command or a helper for that department head, police as a sergeant. General government has obviously town clerk and the director of finance that can always step in. So that's a big part to allow Darnell and direct, Darnell is the director to kind of interact more with the different utility companies, state highway, the county government and those and kind of oversee some of those road projects a bit more versus being hands on with bulk trash, for instance, so that will allow the foreman to kind of oversee the day to day hands on things. And work with a senior crew member as well, gives us that option so that we can have two teams of public works crews, which is the norm. You have a senior person, junior person, one truck doing one duty and then another super, lower supervisor and some crew members in another truck and they can kind of do two things at once unless it's a large job where more of them are there. So we're really excited to see those changes in the public works department to help move that forward.
I just have a quick question about the code enforcement officer, because I'm wondering if we brought in a new code enforcement officer. Are with, you know, what pay grade we're wanting them to be in, because we had talked about that, I thought.
Yeah, absolutely. So we, we talked about code enforcement and parking enforcement or code enforcement splitting with parking enforcement. And to be honest, usually a code enforcement officer, depending on what we have them do as well, like if they're starting to look at the building permits and rental inspections, there is a kind of a higher level of, of skill that's needed and training. So I think if we just give them the kind of that range in there, it allows, like if we have someone who's got no experience, we obviously hire them at their lower pay grade. Versus if they're coming from another municipality, they have all these certs and we definitely want them. It just gives us that range to hire within the budget, of course. But you'll definitely see the, if we do do any changes, that, that code enforcement officer will come out of public safety, moved to, to a general government. And then a parking authority officer, because we're trying to get away from enforcement. Parking authority officer be added to the public safety department to focus in on the, the parking tickets and all that. That's, but that's, we're not reflecting that this current budget.
Right.
Most likely the next budget at least, or any budget amendments, we may see that.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay, moving on. Item six is twenty twenty one employee handbook, it is a board discussion.
Absolutely, um, so as the board is aware, we've been talking about this for quite some time. We had a Word document out for editable Word document for the commissioners, department heads and our HR firm collaborate on comments made and whatnot. So last week I went through and took all the comments, made some, made some changes, I think, addressed them all. And then today, and Will and I met with insurance and they gave us their stamp of approval minus one item in particular. And let me actually pull the handbook draft up. Which was the timekeeping, correct, Will? That was the only area they were concerned with everything else. They said it was the, one of the more in depth municipal handbooks they've seen are more detailed.
No, you're right, Kyle, that was the one area that we need to add some support or strength behind as far as timekeeping with some of the things or the features that we have within the department, so yes. And then the only thing that we're going to do, that's not, I won't say it's not priority, but it, it doesn't have to be passed at the same time, we're going to do some edit or update in or add some other side policies to support certain sections within the, within the employee handbook such as sexual harassment, sexual abuse. What are some of the other ones, Kyle?
Social media.
Social media policies as well. So those are the things that we're going to add too, sorry, go ahead, Kyle.
Oh no, I was just gonna say that's, that's handbook kind of covers that, some of those lightly, but those would obviously be in depth. But, but that was their one issue was timekeeping, but I didn't know if the commissioners had any comments on any of the, and the highlighted areas are the where the changes were, comments were. And I know Commissioner Franklin sent, sent some editing stuff, so we definitely have those. The, the formatting edits.
I think I had, I think five areas I marked that were more like the board should discuss than an editing thing. So the first one is on page eleven. And it's under employment categories. They're temporary. And it, it talks about temporary employees. And at the bottom, it says employment beyond the specified period should not in any way, in a way imply a change to the individual's employment status or benefit eligibility, which I think makes sense, but I also think there has to be some kind of limit to that. We can't say you're a temporary employment employee and keep standing, oh, you're still a temporary employee, but for longer and longer and longer. I feel like there needs to be some thing for the employee to be able to be like, hey, I've been here three years, I'm not a temporary employee.
Um, that is, that is a good point. I think this is, this wasn't an item that I think we added or anything, this was kind of in here. So I don't think any of us had any input in developing this particular section, what their thoughts were behind it. But I think probably adding some, some sort of thing like maybe a year, two year maximum to pick, because it's, I guess, supposed to be geared toward a specific project.
Right.
But normally we use firms rather than than people, but it comes to mind that the, I think I talked to the board about the circuit manager program from the state. So that I think could classify as, as a temporary employee, they're not they're more on a contract basis with the state, but I think that the fact that they're with the state and funded by the state, they have their own guidelines set. But that's probably the closest thing I can think of, but we could, I mean, add something a year, two years. I don't know how long a, a project would be.
Yeah, maybe, um, like, it should just be if employment is extended beyond the temporary, beyond completion of the temporary project or assignment. Then the employee will have kind of a new status, however, that gets put in there.
They should no longer be considered temporary employees. They should be, so if we tell them that they should be temporary employees, that way it kind of forces the town to put them into one of the other categories.
Right, once the project's Did the rest of the board have, that's, I brought it, because I thought it was something. Okay, I can, the next one I have is on page twenty one, which is all your, it's your new stuff. And I think when I went through it, a lot of stuff, and I think this was from like before we had human resources was all going to the president instead of the human resources director and it was like human resources stuff. So I was wondering if that kind of got carried over into here. Where you have administrative leave. Says to donate blood to undergo medical examination ordered by the president or chief of police. It, so one of the reasons I think HR It. So one of the reasons I think HR should do this is because HR protects us from ourselves. So they make sure we don't order anything that we can't water or anything like that. So. You know, if we're ordering a medical examination, I think that should go through HR. And the administrative duty. I mean, I don't know if that needs to go through HR or the president. On that perspective.
Chief, I think. Let me, I can probably explain that a little bit better. Those were changes that I put in there. It's mainly related to the police department, but it could also be used for general government. And to go up administrative leave could be used for an example. I'll just say we have a. I don't know. We make up a position, something that nobody has at town hall right now, like a. But I don't know, somebody that does something and they do something inappropriate and let's say it needs to be investigated. The police department could investigate it, but instead of necessarily. Putting that person on. Work release or something like that or like a timeout, you put them on administrative leave until the investigation is done. So if the investigation finds out that what the allegations were. Are not true, then that person goes back to regular leave, but administrative leave is more administrative to be able to handle any internal things. And that could be with any, any, any department. But I I brought it in to the point of law enforcement. But we could also do investigations on regular general staff employees if needed, and that's why it's in there. The same thing with administrative duty, which means. Someone could be under investigation or whatever the case may be or could be injured, but they're coming to work. But they're on a limited capacity, meaning they they can come to work, but they can't go out. And so let's say, for example. Someone in the police department gets injured. Well, they can come to work, but they can't go out on patrol, so they have to be administrative duty around the office. Or let's say someone in public works gets injured because they're out in the field, they come in and do something in the office. That's administrative duty. Then obviously light duties if somebody gets injured on duty or off duty, they can't perform their. Their job to the fullest, then the doctor may put them on light duty, which is a category. So the town has to recognize the light duty status of any employee, especially if they come from a medical doctor. And so we had that.
I just think human resources needs to be at least if it if it's everyone, like there just needs to be some kind of connection tie in. Because human resources should know like and be facilitating everything.
Well, yes, I mean, that that is how it normally is set up that. So let's say, for example. If somebody got injured, a new employee got injured. On the police department. Any medical doctors, notes and things of that nature have to go to. Human resources, even though I can be CC on it, but it has to be through HR because if there's any claims or anything, that's not going to be something that I handle. That will be HR. Who will be communicating with the persons representative, whether it's doctor, attorney, or whatever the case may be. Hopefully that makes sense.
Yeah, I guess I'm just wondering if we should change the president to HR in this in these two instances for administratively and administrative duty.
I mean, we could. But that's up to the board, but definitely I didn't think of it from that angle, but yes, the it all would have to go through HR.
I mean, I I think that of course HR has to be connected within this within all of these items here. I do think that the chief or the president can be the ones when I'm looking at the bottom. As far as administrative leave, it says to undergo a medical examination ordered by the president or chief of police. I do believe that the president or chief, or I would say at least the president most certainly or the chief of police. Can order should be able to order some form of a medical examination. I do also think that human resources based off of the investigation or what they've come up with or the documentation or coordination with. The resources, whether it's our certain carriers that we have should be able to also. Request us or be able to order individuals to go get a medical examining examination as well. So I do think human resources. Resources should be here. Within this area because of this particular topic of administrative leave. I think that the president name should probably be added in there or kept in here as well, because I think the president. Of the order board of commissioners should probably be those individuals to order some sort of this because it's administratively. And then however, however, just a commissioner, like you mentioned, there were a lot of areas that the president most certainly should be removed. From certain. I guess. So we highlighted those, but that's just my that's my opinion on administrative leave. And I'm not sure how the rest of them reads them kind of looking through them as well.
So maybe we can just add human resources to the in there. President, human resources or chief of police.
That would be the easiest fix to me. If you just add the, you know, the title, human resources in there.
Turn on the bedroom TV.
You know, that way it it covers all angles, but anything. Any employees that get injured or have any medical conditions, they have to go through HR.
Right.
Anyway, so. So yes, so just adding human resources will probably be fine.
Should we have human resources verify weekly? For kind of those things as well, especially like light duty and stuff like kind of like how we have up here for. Disability leave, we have the human resources checking in every so often. Should they also do that for? I guess at least light duty because that's the only other injury related. Duty.
I mean, well, yes, but I will say that the doctors know they should have for for some of these like light duty, the physicians note should. Detail what their restrictions are when their next checkup is. And of course, we will. Be in court communication with that employee, but I do think that hopefully the note will specify some things. And there's what things most certainly things or items that we can ask in or request from the employee and from the doctor.
I have three more, I think. The next one is on page. Oh, never mind. That one's. I don't know why that one's there. So page thirty. It just it refers to the law enforcement bill of rights or similar guidelines, but I thought that that got repealed.
So it did, but they haven't actually renamed it or retitled it yet. I did see that and I forgot to say something about that.
That's why we added or similar guidelines. Because right now for when this is introduced, I guess the the law enforcement bill rights will still be active chief until October.
No, actually, it's it's that portion of it is still effective until July of next year. So we still have a year to kind of play with and figure out what it is. That's the reason I think I forgot about it because it's not October. It's actually July one of next. That it that portion of the reform will change.
So then that should stay in there. Sorry.
At least, I mean, that's at it next year.
Yeah.
And we have more similar guidelines.
Or similar guidelines.
And then when we review it again, we can put the new language in unless. If the changes are to the point where we need to revisit the handbook.
So my last thing is the dress code. Because. The dress code is called business casual, but what's described is business. So I just feel like, is it business dress or is it business casual dress? Which one? So. Yeah. His business casual is kind of like, you know, a nice shirt and nice pants for everyone, like not jackets or ties or anything like that. Once you put on a tie or business. Attire.
So do we want to change? We could just say that the town's version of business casual is that or? Because I think normally we do. Like to see ties, but we don't require the jackets. It all depends. I mean, on with COVID, honestly, and we're not physically. Seeing the public or hopping on physical meetings. I think that's definitely changed.
I mean, I guess it just if we want ties and jackets and stuff like that, then we should just change it to business instead of business casual.
And then Fridays can be business casual instead of dressed down days. That works. Is that where obviously the other commissioners, does that work for the other board members? We can make that minor.
I'm fine with that.
Yes, I'm fine with that as well.
That's all. Thank you.
But just if you could refresh my memory real quick, so we talked the the items we spoke on was the.
I can send you a summary.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah, I'll shoot that over to you. Put it in my pile for tomorrow when I get back from work. Okay.
Thank you. Yeah, that just helps me do the final draft. Send it over. To the. I'll let the HR firm know of the changes as well, just so they're aware, but then the town attorney will get the the final draft and we'll have the resolution for approval. And there was one item, the discussion on I know was brought up in here, but we put it in the we're going to put in the new personal ordinance about the. Not taking down the vacation days or the the handbook's edited, the vacation book days can't be, we decide that'd be better in the ordinance because that would stand if if the handbook's taken down. The ordinance would stand, so I wanted to break that out to the public as well.
Yeah, we shouldn't do that to the employees again.
Okay. Moving on, Eric, is there any other discussion on the handbook?
Oh, I'm sorry, the pay we we never figured out the pay thing.
Well.
I'm sorry, there's the one section the HR firm was discussing. That is the. You know, page that was well by chance. I just had it up here. Here go time keeping. I'm sorry, I forgot to bring this up, but their thing was in here because of one of our departments is required. The department had requested a time clock. To be used, which we used to use before. So there was never really any language specifically saying time clock. We took out. So we put in here, department heads may use time clocks as they see fit to track not exempt employees, the hourly employees. They the HR firm's recommendation. Was that kind of be standard across the board, correct? Well, so maybe all not exempt or tracked by some sort of. Time clock. I know some other departments may not like that thought or may not work as well. But that was above my pay grade as a as a thought, but I know we have the two department heads on here as well.
We would need two time clocks.
Yeah.
Yeah, definitely need another one.
Because we have two locations with non exempt.
So I don't know if chief want to talk about the police is chief, is there a way that times kept for or to track? Police time separately than a time clock, such as when they mark up on the radio or something that we could kind of qualify as a as a time clock.
Yeah, and that that's going to become problematic as we grow. Because they will get to a point in time where we'll have officers that. When they start work, they may get a call for service that's been holding. So then that means they wouldn't be able to answer for that call. They'd have to go in and punch a time clock and turn around and go back out. You know, there. If that's what you all require, I don't think it's going to work well for the police department. Because generally, you know, police departments don't use time clocks because when you key up on the radio going in service, that's generally when you start your day. And then when you leave, you go out of service. And that's generally the supervisor's responsibility, making sure that you're doing your eight hours or 10 hours or whatever it is. And then. Any leave that we anybody uses, you know, you submit a leave slip so that we know what hours you're actually gone, if that makes sense.
But the radio. Yeah, could the radio be considered a time clock chief? And I could, we could get creative with the language here with HR.
Maybe could you just say use utilize time clocks or whatever the term is for radioing in? There's probably a police.
Yeah, I yeah, I can play with it to keep it to keep it separate because that's when they said that my immediate thought was exactly what chief said, the police officers. As soon as they drive into town, they're they're on the clock. And they could come across something on the way in or someone blows a light in front of them. And then they're on duty right then. So that I knew that. Off the bat when the HR firm brought that up, but that was the only issue with that's that the HR firm had. So that's why I wanted to bring it to. To your attention. So we. If the board wishes, I can work with the HR from we can come up with some language that works for them, but then also incorporates the police needs as well.
They've probably dealt with that before.
Yeah, they they maintain a couple of different municipalities, so I'm. I was kind of surprised they didn't have any anything, but I'll we can will and I can work with them.
Nail them down on it.
Yeah, nail down the language. We can keep the.
I had a question. Is this the meeting that I should talk about? Pay change schedule change or is that?
Oh, yeah, that's the next.
Next on the agenda.
Oh, okay. All right. I'm mad at myself.
So that's that's all I had for the handbook mayor unless anyone else has anything.
Anyone, anything else on the handbook? So it's going to go back to HR and then to legal.
Correct. Yeah, the final stage is legal and then it will just I'm sure the clerk's office will play with its formatting a little bit because we've tweaked quite a few lines. So I'm definitely want to give Dave enough time to go through the formatting part and then it gets introduced with a resolution and. Go from there and then we'll be all set.
Okay, moving on. Item seven, pay schedule change for discussion. This is for you, Will.
So. So currently the town of Marlboro, we the the employees get. Twenty six pay periods within the fiscal year and we get paid bi weekly. We everyone gets paid on Friday. However, I think we well, we we've had some issues or some some concerns about the way our current pay schedule is is set up. So the town. The 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 town's pay period will start in the middle of a week on a Wednesday. And end on the. The second Tuesday. Which is which will come up to fourteen total calendar days, ten business days. And so it'll start on a Wednesday and end on a Tuesday. What that does or has done in the past for myself and the super, the the department heads and employees. Is really only given us roughly thirty six hours to put in in the time in the system. I'm in our third party administrator ADP. So it's only given us about thirty six hours to put the time in to review the time to make the changes before. It's been processed for for payroll for direct deposit. So we think that or we know that. Kind of changing the the schedule will allow for more time for this so that we won't have any errors. So that the supervisors can be able to check and make sure that it is individual did they worked eight hour eighty hours in the the pay period or they had overtime hours or. If someone forgets to put their overtime in, I can be there as far as that final person for review to add that in there before I process things. So. So the paper, what we want to do is we want to change it from a Sunday to a Saturday. So it'll start on Sunday and then it'll end on the second Saturday, which will give it the fourteen days of the plan for this is to start it. On really June twenty seventh. Which in order for us to do this, we are going to have to cut the prior prepare. So you'll see a highlighted schedule pay schedule number one. We'll have to cut that paper is short. So you'll see it'll only be technically only ten days from June sixteenth to June twenty sixth. But what we're going to do, we're going to advance the employees, the three days or the twenty four hours within that pay period. And then we're going to start that next paper, which is how we're going to go moving forward on Sunday, June twenty seventh and ended on June tenth. That pay will be for July sixteenth, but the individual, the employees will get twenty four hours less pay within. That pay will be for July sixteenth, but the indivi- the employees will get twenty-four hours less pay within that paycheck. So they're not getting to, they're, they're gonna get advanced at twenty-four hours of first pay and then get twenty-four hours less on that next pay. So no one's gonna lose any money. We're just gonna give this a head time, a heads up to the employees so they can budget accordingly. With their finances or their monthly expenses or whatnot, but they're not losing any money and they're not gaining any money either. We're, that's just what we have to do to, in order for us to change the pay schedule. So I know some of the department heads are, are happy to see this. And that's pretty much all I have right here. This is pay schedule or payroll schedule that you may see on your screen. Details all twenty-six pay periods within the fiscal year. So I know you see that the pay schedule is for twenty-seven. That's because, of course, there's one pay, additional pay that I wanted to highlight to talk about when the change will be, will go into effect. But that's pretty much it. And of course, I got, I can answer any questions.
You explained it so well as always, Will.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Any other questions, any comments for Will on this? I don't see anything wrong with it myself. The employees all understand how this is gonna work.
Well, that's, this memo go out to the employees. I think Will just wanted to run it past the board first and get, and get your stamp of approval. Before sending it out. So I think, and Will correct me if everything looks good to the commissioners today, he'll probably get it out here soon to prepare everyone.
Yeah, it looks good to me. The only, I mean, he answered all the questions. Actually, I just wanted to make sure that the staff would be informed. Really, to make sure that they have time planned. So all of that was taken care of. Thanks, Will.
Yeah, maybe all the department heads can just follow up with their employees and say, hey, you get that message, you understand it, just to make sure.
And, and really, you're, you're right, Commissioner, both commissioners, like, that's why we wanted to make sure we give them like thirty to forty-five days ahead of time. So they can know, we'll remind them as it's changing, of course, cause they'll see addition to twenty-four hours, which at times people. Really, they might not notice that, or maybe they will, but I'm sure they'll notice the twenty-four hours less. So, uh, but we'll make sure we notify them. And we tried, within a memo, I gave an example of. Uh, when they have to have their time in by. So just to make sure. That everyone knows that. So we give you an, an example. The time sheet will end like on, on July twenty-sixth. I'm sorry, yes. Know the pay period will end on July twenty-fourth, which is a Saturday. And I'm giving them twenty or forty-eight hours in order to get their time input in the system. They'll have to have it in within, by July twenty-sixth by five PM. The supervisors will pretty much have. Roughly about twelve to twenty-four hours to approve it on a following day as of July twenty-seventh. And then on June thirty, they'll get their pay. I have to have everything within the system by Thursday afternoon. And at times, ADP is very hard to get through to because everybody's trying to process payroll. So I always try to get in there and, and early so that if I have any issues that I don't have to sit on the phone for two or three hours. Until I can get some assistance. So I think we've been able to outline it pretty well. And again, we most certainly would do our best to, you know, we will. Let everybody know, cause that's one thing that we don't want to play with, is other people's money.
Okay, moving forward, we are at number eight, which is general commissioner and, and administrative staff items. Does anybody have anything they wish to discuss?
I do. No one's surprised.
Not at all.
Sorry, I have two things. The first, I just, cause I noticed Marlboro Town is on here and we talked about their roads and the MOU with them. Last time, but they weren't there. We were talking about them without them. And I guess just kind of what we talked about was. The fact that you guys maintain your roads, but it seems like the town, I, I feel like the town. Should be maintaining them. And then we were talking about that in the context of the fact that we have this grant to do street scape improvements. On school lane. School rectory. Old Mill.
Wilson.
Wilson.
And Old Mill, yeah. And Spring Branch.
And Spring Branch. And how it would be more cost-effective to try and pull that in. And we were gonna, we wanted to talk to you all about your memorandum of understanding and how you guys feel about that, if you want to do that, if you don't want to do that. I guess after we get through all this budget stuff, but I feel like we should tell you we were talking about you. Oh, you guys are all on mute. I don't know if you have any.
Monica, do you have any que- questions or comments?
Hello, um, y- yes, um, I do feel like it's a good idea, especially considering that we. Do contribute to the taxes going towards the town. And it just seems that, you know. We're looking at the rest of the town being maintained at a certain level. And then there's our side streets. I understand that that was the agreement for, I guess, however long the subdivision has been in existence. It just doesn't, I, it just, it just doesn't necessarily work that well currently. Again, it just goes back to, okay, yes, I am for, you know, I understand the increase in. The tax rate, et cetera. You have to be able to maintain the town. So I just. I mean, I guess the bottom line will be just, we just don't feel like it's fair for us to watch all the, the other roads get paved. Even the main road that goes straight down our community and then not the side roads to get maintained. And that's been, there's been chatter, obviously, within the community about that, like, why are the sides not done? Or why, why everything else in the town done except for the side roads on, in the Marlboro Town subdivision? So I would, you know, like to just continue to have discussions about that. And that's where we are now, just having a discussion about it.
So you guys are good talking about your man, the MOU later. Yes, yes.
Cause there's some other items, I think, especially streetlights. I've been talking to your HOA board and that seems like. An issue as well. That is also listed. It's, it's weirdly specific in the MOU that the town pays for the electricity. But the HOA maintains the streetlights, which is odd, cause you go to other roads, like Spring Branch. Maintains and pays for the electricity. So I'm not sure what the thought was behind that, but.
The thought probably is the fact that Spring Branch pays taxes. It doesn't have an HOA. To begin with. I mean, you collect HOA fees from your.
We collect HOA fees at the equivalent of maybe thirty-five dollars a month. We are, as I mentioned at the last meeting, we are pretty much in the same situation that the town is in. Where previous boards did not, over time, increase fees. The same way the town did not continue to increase taxes for future projects and maintenance. There is just no way at the rate we're going, at the rate that we're collecting, that we can maintain the side roads. And the streetlights. It's just not, we, there's just no way for us to do that. If, in order for us to do that, we would have to basically enact a special. Assessment on every homeowner that they're just not gonna go for. Because if we do that, then they're gonna turn back and say, well, wait a minute, we are paying taxes for where we live. Why is that not being invested into, into the community? Basically, what we're collecting, it takes care of the. Beautification of the community at best. So it takes care of the grass cutting, it takes care of the, you know, the basic seat. That's basically what it takes. We've tried to do a lot of different routes to fund the repairs. And the maintenance of the lighting in the community, it's just not panning out. We've looked for grants. And then we've been told we don't qualify for them because of the type of HOA that we are. We just keep hitting a roadblock. We've gone, you, this is basically the last, the last point, the last resort that we, this is just the last resort. We haven't, we didn't, didn't just think to go straight to the town and ask them, well, can you do this? No, we went other different avenues. And those just did not work out. So yes, we're collecting an HOA fee, but we're not collecting, say, the, the HOA fees that maybe George's Boulevard is collecting. Or that a condo is collecting. We're not just like rolling in the dough, collecting HOA.
And maybe in the memorandum of understanding, we can have some kind of language that, like. I, I guess what I'm kind of hearing from Linda is like, we don't want the HOA to then go assessing huge fees. On town residents, when town residents are all, you know what I'm saying? So maybe we can put that language.
Right, we're not gonna double, obviously, we just, we're, yeah, we're not in the business wanting to double dip or. You know, we're, that's, you know, we're, we're, you know, we're just, you know, we're just at a point right now where we just can't justify. The amount that we would have to collect in order to do what we, what needs to be done within the neighborhood.
And you guys kind of would be a precedent, like if. The MOU would be a precedent for any future MOU. Other HOAs. So we'll have to, like, right, while we're doing.
Cause another item is.
I mean, yeah, definitely, yeah.
Code enforcement?
Yeah, code enforcement and how.
Yeah, there's code.
It's, it's gonna be a very complex, I think, setup for annexation very well. How the town engages with, with HOAs and how. We don't want the town to come in and step all over the HOAs, obviously, but what, where, where the code enforcement, when the code enforcement comes in. When the streets get flowed, streetlights and stuff like, I think it'll be a very comprehensive versus, I think the half-page. That the current MOU is, is only like three lines. So we can only go up, so. But I think something the board just kind of agreed with was, obviously, as we discussed, the first step for the street scape. The street project was bringing a firm in. And I think the board was on board with having them look at those HOA side streets as well. Incorporate it into their study, cause it won't cost all that much. And that way, the town has some cost estimates as well when we start to discuss the. The actual moving forward. And that also bides as time to look at the, the MOU. Because we probably won't see that study completed until late summer or early fall. Before we start talking about what projects, what streets, priority projects. But I could set time, I think, at the July work session, if the board met with the Marlboro Town HOA, I think that would. Be a good timeline, just looking at our planning for all the meetings. Does that work for?
Yeah, after the budget cycle. And we get that rolled up, we can have more time to spend giving it the attention it deserves.
I do have one other little thing. I think it's little. So a, a resident on my street. Asked me about the curb cuts, because their curb cut is like wonky. Kind of almost like it, it scrapes the bottom of the cars. And they're getting ready to redo their driveway. And so they would like to have the. There's a concern that maybe one of their vehicles was damaged by it, but they, they want to have the. Curb cut dealt with. And they weren't sure whose responsibility that was. I talked to Kyle. And he said the town needs to do that. She can't do the.
Yeah, the town, just to give the board some background, and we're actually, Darnell and I are gonna be meeting with the, the resident tomorrow. Sometime, we're just gonna nail down the time tomorrow. And that was one of my items discussed, so you're.
Sorry.
No, you're good. And so pretty much what it is, is for some reason, the town or the homeowner, someone decades ago dumped a large amount of asphalt. I don't know if it was some sort of stormwater management attempt to stop stormwater from coming down. But they covered up the existing sidewalk and curb with this big mound of, of asphalt. And then ran a PVC pipe through it. I'm honestly not sure who did it. And it's right there where Church Street hits Old Mill Road. So it's interesting. I've always been curious about it. So we're, Darnell and I are gonna go out there, discuss, see what their plans are with the gravel and see if it's something we do now, the town does now. Do we do with, when the engineering firm comes out to look at that kind of area? Cause we have to talk about the Church Street at Old Crane Highway intersection, how that could look a lot differently. So we're gonna talk to the owner, homeowner, see how, what's going on, what, what can we do now? Should we act now? Should we act later? So if it's an act now situation, I'll definitely be bringing some proposals to the board soon. It's weird, I'll admit.
There's something I, did that property at some time, at some point have a flood issue?
We have issues down here.
No, I mean, I understand that, but I remember. Someone having some very, and you might want to check with Mr. Story.
Okay.
Have mitigated that in some way. That may not have been as good as it should have been.
Yeah, that I have, so it's my, it's my neighbor. So, cause I have a, what's it called, swale? It's called swale. It's concrete though, in front of my house. And then that stops. At her driveway. Which, I mean, I guess it stops for my driveway too, but it, it's, it's like, it's almost like the swell. Maybe they put the swell in and then put the pipe through to continue to swell down onto Church Street without. I mean, that's possible.
Something at some point. It was quite a few years ago, a, a number of years ago when they did it. And I just can't.
I think it may date back pre, sort, um, cause the homeowner said they moved in there about ten years ago and it was like that already. So, yeah, so we're gonna, Darnell and I'll reach out there and see, and I'll do some digging, see what we, what the issue is. But my first thought is it's stopping stormwater from going into the driveway and down that area. Was the only thing I could think of that makes sense of why they did that, that way.
That, that's exactly what it's doing, Kyle. And it, it is a continuation of the, of the.
Swale.
Yeah, of the swell that's there. Because other than that, it would just be, that swell would just fill with standing water.
Which is the hodgepodge stormwater management we're trying to correct.
I bet it was the county that did it. It was, it was there in two thousand. Eight or nine, cause I remember President Sonnet talking about, he didn't know what it was about.
It was done in two thousand nine, babe?
I would don't, no idea what was done. That's why I say it's probably the county just coming through and doing their thing and nobody noticed.
I, I mean, I, I guess it's both Church Street and Old Crane.
So it's like on Church Street, but her address is Old Crane.
Right, but then the house, the driveway is two driveways.
Yes.
And Church Street and one house is an old crane, so.
It's a funner section, but, uh. And see what's going on and see what their urgency is, what we could do and, and bring some options to the board to consider.
Okay, thank you.
And then I had a few, I had a quick items, mayor, no commissioners. I'm working to get a Church Street appraisal done. So that we can move the state bond bill funds forward. So that may be an expense, hopefully under two thousand dollars. To have an appraisal come out, get the property appraised. It should be a lot less than that, but that's just an expense we may incur between now and the next town meeting. I just want to give the board a heads up. Cruising Main Street is tentatively set for August twenty-eighth, Saturday, August twenty-eighth. We'll be working with that, make sure it's a safe event and town staff and whatnot dedicated. I just want to put that out there. I sent out a calendar appointment to the commissioners and staff. The town is looking to, or hopefully hosting a vaccine event on May tenth. The county has gone radio silence on me. Cause I was trying to get stuff firmed up before I go on vacation next week. But worse comes to worse, I have the state also on standby that wanted to do a vaccine event. I just figured the county would be better to work with the county. On that, but just make sure that happens on, it most likely also be walk-in as well on Monday, May tenth. Hopefully I'll have more detail soon. The cleanup, the towns participating in the county executive, Angel also Brooks cleanup, green up event. On Saturday, May first, we're gonna be hosting a downtown of Marlboro cleanup, including the Squaw's Pond, Government Goo Drive, Main Street. And Elm Street. So any volunteers or town residents on the call, and they can expand to other neighborhoods as well. If their neighborhood would like it, just let us know. We just kind of picked those areas, cause it was kind of. would like it, just let us know. We just kind of picked those areas because it was kind of contained and we could oversee it. But we always figured depending on the amount of volunteers, or if we had a bunch of neighbors from rectory who wanted to clean a rectory, we can be pretty flexible. So there's a sign up sheet um on all the town social media if you want to sign up and let us know. That'll be from nine A M to about eleven thirty. Uh and then Darnell, um Mr. Bond worked, we uh met with Green Tree, which is a local tree company. One of the owners or supervisors lives on Rectory, um and they gave us some quotes for some tree removals, um which together is just over three thousand dollars. That's removing some dead trees at the playground lot in preparation for it to be uh to be done. There's some dead trees and some dead branches and some stumps to grind out just for preparation work. That's not in the state grant. That was always gonna be a town expense. It's actually a lot less than I budgeted for, which is great. Um so we'll probably bring that up for a board vote at the uh May town meeting. So I just want to give board members a heads up. But it's around just thirty-five hundred, correct, Darnell? For both um the uh playground lot and taking down some dead trees around the con memorial as well.
Yes, and the removal and grinding of stumps as well.
Thank you. And they're look, they're interested in partnering with the town, correct, Darnell, as a gesture of goodwill and community relations?
Yes.
Some of that's, yeah. So we'll be sure to give them a shout out.
Yeah, and they're also gonna be um sort of lifting the the ceiling, so to speak, and removing uh vines on the trees uh at town hall as well.
Yeah.
That that quote came came well under what I thought it would be.
Oh, yeah. Well, I was expecting ten thousand, but it's
Definitely.
Thirty-five hundred. So, yeah, like Darnell mentioned, just take some of the branch, low hanging branches, kind of trimming them up um and then remove all vines because Darnell and their, his crew did a great job of actually cutting the vines around the base of the trees at town hall, which killed the vines, it looks like. So the tree company is coming in with a lift and uh they said they can pull the vines off the trees as well. So thank you, Darnell, for you coordinating that and uh your crew cutting the vines. Um so that's something pricey at the uh the May town meeting for approval. Um and then we kind of touched on this, but Marlboro Town H O A, I've been talking to their management firm person for a couple of different items, some code issues and some uh refuse collection and also the streetlight issue um that we've talked about. And trust trying to troubleshoot, I think one of the biggest steps will be the the M O U. Um but I know in the meantime, one of the focuses, once the um town hall solar panels are installed and the electric vehicle grants closed out, the next grant, um energy grant, I was gonna suggest to the board with streetlight updates from regular to L E D, um which would include Marlboro Town because the town, well, even currently it would include Marlboro Town because the town pays for electricity for those lights. So it would benefit the town to change out those lights. Um but I know they're having some issues with grounding and some wiring issues underground. So the each of the uh the M O U will hopefully allow the town to go and kind of help fix some of those issues um and maintain the streetlights like the regular town streetlights like everywhere else. And we're moving forward the town clerk hiring process, getting some applications in in the next week or so. Myself and Will are gonna work with and charity to uh get the candidates lined up and um uh for the board to review and rank possibly and then start scheduling some interviews in May. That's all I had, Mayor.
Okay, anyone else?
Oh, Will's got something.
To um bounce all the way back to the beginning of the meeting with a question uh was posed as far as what, why the public works was roughly forty-five percent over the utilities line item. So uh there's a vendor that we have uh by the name of Cummins. Um and the vendor Cummins sent us back in roughly uh November of twenty twenty bills and and or in invoices actually from F Y twenty twenty, so from the prior fiscal year. Um so what happened was actually they sent this one bill probably like, uh I would say roughly about July of twenty twenty. And I never seen Cummins before. I never heard of them, but they pretty much come out once a year to annually inspect, I believe it's our generator. Is that right, Doug, Kyle?
Yeah, it's that, so it'd actually be a town hall utility.
Right. Oh, okay. So it's a town hall, so right. So they come out once a year, I believe, to inspect. So we had two bills from um the prior year and this year um for inspection. And then the, there was another bill where they had to service it, which uh amounted roughly to about twelve hundred dollars. So those are the the three invoices that came in that pretty much spiked up in number four utilities in that uh
Yeah, and just to clarify, Will, um they come out quarterly. But if I'm not mistaken, the invoices may be annually.
Okay.
I can attest the, that was the first I'd seen of invoices, the latest one. It wasn't paying them or ignoring those invoices. They weren't coming in until just.
Yeah, um the way, the way that it was sort of explained to me is the type of, so we were signed up for some sort of multi-year service agreement. Um I I've never heard of a service agreement that is actually that long. I believe it's something around seven years. Normally it's two to three years and then uh there's a whole slew of new charges, maybe goes up or stays the same. But uh if I'm not mistaken, it's a seven-year agreement.
Yeah, you're right. Now, I'm not exactly sure of the years, uh but I know that there's most certainly some type of agreement or term within the their service, the the contract that we get, that we receive, the individual I spoke to via the phone call highlighted that to me because again, like they said, I've never, when I first got the bills, I'd never seen them before. So I called to inquire and see what it was was about. I mean, they did say that we had some, a a few years on within an agreement that they come out and services. So you are correct. But that's the statement. I just wanted to make note to the board of commissioners what that was.
I appreciate you checking that.
Um, is that gonna cause, or the vehicle maintenance thing, is that gonna cause the same problem next fiscal year potentially?
It may. Um however, what I will, if if bills for, so we try to call in the financing where you try to call like a period thirteen. So if bills come in after like a month of thirty to forty-five days after the fiscal year ends, you can still, you'll pay them in a new fiscal year, but you'll backdate it as a accrue or whatnot of an expense that came from the prior fiscal year. So that didn't happen with these invoices. They came, as I mentioned, like kind of more so in August. And then August time is timeframe for one invoice and then two invoices came in in November. So that didn't happen with these ones. But yes, that could happen with that uh the vehicle maintenance. Uh but it all depends on when they send it. So hopefully they send it within that period thirteen gap so that we can kind of backdate it to a F Y twenty twenty-one expense.
Anyone have anything else? Okay, hearing nothing, we, uh I thank you for joining us. It is now eight thirty-eight and everybody have a good evening. It's still somewhat young.
Aren't we all?
Just a little bit. We're getting there, but it's, uh and have a good evening, everybody.
Good night.
Thank you. Good night.